I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first, actually our first item of business this evening since we have no presentations, well, public comments, the opportunity for people in the board this evening to bring items up to read on board agenda or have something to do with our board administration business. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three minutes. We have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. We have board workshop minutes June thirteenth. We also have board board meetings June twentieth. I move that the board approve these two sets of things. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The president's report.
Remove the president's report for June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. It consists of the year-to-date summary of revenue and expenditures, all funds, statement of assets, liabilities, and fund balances, annual print benefit summary, investment statements, and student activity and athletic.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, word policy. We've got several policies, all for second reading. These are policies that have been on our board agenda for the past meeting as well as this evening. So, the second reading gives us the opportunity to approve these policies and make them part of our district policy management. We have policy one fourteen for gifted. We have policy one fifteen for technical, for career in technical education. One sixteen for tutoring. One seventeen for home bath instruction. One eighteen for independent study. And two forty-nine for bullying, bullying and cyberbullying. I move that the board approve these policies for second reading.
Second.
The motion ends second. Any questions?
Evan, on the bullying policy, two forty-nine, under guidelines under education, it says the district may develop and implement bullying prevention and intervention programs. And I like to change the word "may" to "shall" or "will." Where it would read, "The district shall develop and implement bullying prevention intervention programs." And I'd rather see it stronger.
Do we have a recommendation for modification? Is there any further discussion on that item? Have any of our administrative team had any concerns about that modification?
No, I think it's a good idea. It's a worthy idea.
Yes. I would consider that to be a nautical revision and not necessarily a substantial revision. You know, if the board doesn't mind, we continue to retain this per second reading with that modification. Is there any disagreement with that suggestion? With that modification to policy, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next section, six business functions. Dr. Hearn.
Item six A, it has recommended the board exonerate Saint Orange Bureau Tax Collector from the collection of remaining two thousand sixteen per capita tax certificate for Saint Orange consisting of one hundred thirty-three delinquent per capita and eighty exonerated per capita bills, eighty-six point three percent collection rate. And authorizes the district to submit the delinquent per capita bills to Berkhammer Associates for collection. Prior year consisted of one hundred seventy-one delinquent per capita and eighty-three exonerated per capita bills, eighty-three point, eighty-three percent collection rate.
Second. The motion ends second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item six B, it is recommended that the board approves the submission of Berks County Tax Claim Juro to Exeter Township School District two thousand sixteen income taxes declared delinquent for eleven counties amount of eight thousand eight hundred sixty dollars in every instance.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item six C, it is recommended that the board accepts one-year extension of the audit engagement proposal for RKL LLP to audit the tax collector for Exeter Township School District and Exeter Township for the year ended December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. The fee for services will be, will not extend four thousand three hundred dollars. It is shared equally by the school district and the township. The total fee is one hundred dollars higher than the prior year.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion? I just have a question. The chairman of the board at the hospital is the president of the parke. Somebody has stayed on the boat. Okay, Mr. Spina has stayed on the boat. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item six D, it is recommended that the board appoint Sweet Stevens Tax Loting as solicitor for the Exeter Township School District at a rate of one hundred fifty dollars per hour for routine matters, one hundred ninety-five dollars per hour for non-routine hours for the two thousand seventeen fifteen school year.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Who defines what's routine or nonroutine?
Their budget fee proposal, which is attached, does define it. Nonroutine generally cause adversarial issues such as litigation, special education, student expulsion.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Noted that they're recommending that the solicitor not be at regular meetings. I'm wondering why we would not have a solicitor to provide us with legal advice as we consider various questions at the meeting.
That's a good question, and I think that was one of the things we posed to many candidates. We had eight candidates come in, eight firms, you know, come in, you know, as part of our assessment. That question came up frequently. And part of the rationale is that first of all, try to save the district some money for the time that's spent mostly to the attorney who sits there for probably ninety-eight percent of the time. Of course, there could be times, you know, when the attorney is necessary to respond for a question. Our hope is that superintendent of the administration really consider what we're discussing at the board meeting and if the solicitor is necessary to attend the meeting. If it's to desire the board to have a solicitor at our meetings, we could certainly do that. They work it at our, under our conditions. And so if we say, yes, we would like to have an attorney at every one of our meetings, they'll certainly provide that, provide us with that. So it's really our call.
Almost every law firm would tease that this is the train and it's about money. My concern, and I share your question, my concern is that we get into the situation where it's almost like whispering down the lane because the solicitor wasn't present for the conversation. So now they're really, in my opinion, they're at a disadvantage to give solid advice because they're only hearing the perception of one other person who's telling somebody else's story. And I think, I think it involves some risk as far as increased liability. But it just seems to be what other districts are doing and, you know.
Well, other districts may still believe in corporate punishment. That doesn't mean that I don't feel along with it. One error in a vote that could have been prevented by a solicitor giving us valid legal advice could potentially cause this, these doubts. And I think it would be a false economy not to have legal advice available. As I make the, the guess, ninety-eight percent of the time, I don't need my insurance policy on my car. That two percent is the next difference. So it's.
Well, but didn't you, did you say, Dr. Heinerberger, that when that occurs and we don't have the right answer or something, we would say to, if there was a question in the audience or something else, or questions from other school board member, that we could get back to us, talk to our solicitor about it, and get that, you know, table back for the next week?
That's accepted. That's the typical practice is that if we find that we're dealing with an issue and where we're not absolutely certain of the legal implications, then we would defer that question and consult the attorney at the meeting meetings and then get back and give the followings for those who need it.
I mean, some of the lawyers themselves, you know, said a lot of times that they come there and, you know, they just sit there and get the, you know, the clock ticking on the cost. So, you know, they weren't, they said they would do whatever the board would suggest. And, you know, and then also too, like, you know, superintendent or IU might even call them prior to the meeting to ask about an issue, or if we knew that a legal issue was coming up, that, you know, we would need the attorney here, you could also call them, a superintendent would call them and then, you know, have them, or even have a phone conference and even say, maybe do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, this is a point we should all take, but again, every, every firm, as Mr. Schubert said, you know, reiterated that they do what we ask them to do. They'll provide the service that we lay out as part of our local service. It's really up to us.
And that was my interpretation of what they said.
I mean, one thing is there's no retainer at this front. And so a firm that requires a retainer would sort of establish a pretty common practice of coming to the board meetings because that usually contains coverage. In this case, it's simply an hour of reporting. There's a modified rate based upon, as Anne pointed out, routine matters, which would include board meetings versus the specialized matter of litigation, discipline, and special attention.
With the other school boards that don't have a solicitor at the meetings, do you know how long they've done that for? Do you have any idea how many of those school boards don't have one?
I don't know for sure. You know, we spoke, I spoke to two school districts, or I spoke to one school district, but I've heard from two school districts, Owen G. Robbins and Wyman missing. Both have a solicitor at every board meeting. So, but I think that's somewhat uncommon.
I would think that the practice is fairly new. I think the practice has probably come along at the same time that funding has become such an issue and school districts have really tried to tighten their belts in any possible way that they can.
How it's meant to practice is probably at the initiative of the attorneys who don't particularly want to spend the time. Having an attorney present to provide legal advice to an official board who's determining the policy and rules of the school district, I believe is absolutely essential. None of us would enter into a contract without the attorney being available to give advice. I have a second question. Do any of the other school districts in Berks have this? And I know I said that they could all have corporate punishment, but I am concerned about the familiarity with the court system, with the Board of Appraisals, who are all the people at work that are here. And I question why we're going out of camp. And I realize that none of the firms in the county are three D, but I also question, we need that three D.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, there's no, there's no reason why we're going outside of camp other than we're trying to get the best firm that we can get and have the most help. And it is, in our opinion, we have the best firm among all those in the region. We cast a pretty wide net, about thirty mile radius from the district here in terms of the firms that we want to speak to. And I think we actually were, I was pleased to see the range and the fact that so many top firms actually interested in representing the school. They all were highly motivated to work for us. And the firms that, you know, we talked to, you know, we had the depth, reflected the fact that they had, people who specialized in all of the areas of law we really require. You know, so there's a tremendous amount of complication in education law nowadays. For the smaller firms in Berks County, we feel that they have the depth, the venue. And oftentimes, as you know, you know, we have to go outside for specialized services. For instance, if we dealt with the transportation issue with the township, we kind of rely upon firms outside of the county. So, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to really kind of establish, you know, what can these firms provide for us in terms of the widest range of possible services and the highest degree of expertise to give select, great firm. And we hope that the board agrees with that as time goes on. The board's recommendations for a year, you know, for your contract or agreement. And at the end of the year, we will be evaluating the service, examining what the costs are relative to prior years. And we always have an opportunity, even within the meeting this year, before the, they're satisfied to make changes in the year's plan. So, this was our opportunity. We had John Mosley as our solicitor for many, many, many years. Twenty-five years, maybe? More? More?
Oh, so thirty years.
It's been an amazing run with Mr. Mosley. We all, you know, tremendous staff. He's done a phenomenal job for us over the years. And I don't want, in this process, I don't want to discount him or even give you that sense that he does not provide top-notch services. He really has, and we appreciate the work he's done. Is there any more discussion on this topic? Dr. Heimer, Sweet Stevens, and they have represented the school district on collecting bargaining over the past many years. I have not.
Yes.
I haven't. So we've had a, we have a lot of.
We have relationships with them.
And special education as well. Which probably are the two areas that are somewhat in a complex for us. I mean, bond counsel would not be able to, uh, bring the related lives from the city. And we're going to move on to the attorneys that we have currently working. Who are not, Sweet Stevens, who are currently working on projects that we know are complex and could not be, would not be wise to change the terms in this. Just also like to thank the committee that did the work on this and for sharing your research and your notes and the process that you went through, and it was pretty extensive. And the source information that we had to work on. Any further discussion? The motion ends second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next section is personnel. Dr. Heimer.
Part A, resignations. I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following resignations listed under part A. Support staff, dedicated substitute staff, and support substitute staff.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part B, I move that the board of school directors approve the retirement of Stephen T. Wilson.
The motion ends second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part C, I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments of certificated staff, support staff, certificated substitutes, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff.
The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part D, I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following leaves of absence for our certificated staff and support staff.
The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part E, I move that the board of school directors approve the following request for change of status of Joseph B. Codora.
The motion ends second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part F, professional development. I recommend that the board of school directors approve the following teachers to participate in professional development planning for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
The motion ends second. Any discussion?
Thirty-two hours is the contractual rate.
Corrective.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part G, special education extended school year program. I move that the board of school directors approve the additional staffing for special education extended school year program two thousand seventeen for the two teacher, uh, two personnel listed on the agenda.
The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part H, I move that the board of school directors approve extra contract days of no more than two per week for nurse staff during the period July tenth, two thousand seventeen through August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen for the purpose of coordinating new immunization requirements.
The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part I, I move that the board of school directors approve a salary increase of fifty-five cents per hour for the following exempt confidential secretaries effective July first, two thousand seventeen, and those positions are listed on the agenda.
The motion ends second. Any discussion?
What percentage increase does this?
It ranges between two point six and two point seven.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Part J, I move that the board of school directors approve the staff conferences listed under part seven, number one through nine, ten, eleven. Scrolling down.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And part K is just a report that the bachelor's of courses request seven approved.
Just a report.
I think that's a report. Back to the fluids personnel.
Thanks, Dr. Heimer. Mrs. Spencer, student functions.
Item A, I move that the board of directors approves professional services agreement between the school district and Wayne Harris Forest Independent Contractor to provide additional school psychological services as needed to begin June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen through June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen at a cost of seventy-five dollars per hour.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item B, yeah. Um, I move that the board approves a tuition agreement between Hogan Learning Academy LLC and Exeter School District for special education services for students two-two-one-one-six-five and one-nine-zero-three-two-for our two thousand seventeen eighteen school year at a cost of three hundred ninety-five dollars per day for a student for a total of one hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars per year for a student.
The motion ends second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item C, I move that the board of directors approves a tuition agreement between New Story Wyman missing and the Exeter School District for special education services for students one-seven-zero-three-five-eight, one-five-one-four-one-nine, and one-seven-zero-six-nine-five for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year at a cost of three hundred ninety dollars per day for a student for a total of two hundred and seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the three student placements.
Second. The motion ends second. Any discussion?
Does that include bus service then, or is bus service separate?
I presume we provide the bus service.
It does not include bus. We provide the bus service to some of those students. The IU provides the bus service to some of those students. And one student, we have a contract with their own home, provides the transportation.
So, why is that if they can all get on this bus?
Well, they can all get on this thing, but some of them have different needs.
Because of the severity of the students?
Yes.
So they have to go on one of them?
Some is the severity of the student, some is the length of the bus ride with limited resources.
One towards one Wyman?
Yep.
That length of bus ride from Exeter to Wyman missing?
Well, it's not just going, we don't just pick up each student and drive them straight to school. There's a lot of other students on that bus, and that bus goes to several different schools.
You mean, private school, religious schools?
Rick, you can jump in here anytime.
As much as they can, buy pair of schools together if they're in the same area. So you could spend an hour just driving around Exeter picking up students, then you have to get to the other side of town. For some students, that's fine. For others, it's not. And when they need a direct, right from their house to the school, and they can't be on any longer, we don't have the personnel or the vehicles to do that. And then that's why we have to go out to other people.
So then, is it the parent, one parent?
It's really only for one, one student. The Hogan Learning Academy, the BCIU transport. We don't go to Hogan. We don't have a bus that goes out there. And then there's one student who just wasn't able to function on the bus. It was a very lengthy bus ride and behaviors were, you know, he needed more support. So the, his group home was transporting him, and then they agreed to continue to do that.
I didn't know that the parents got a need for. But being a group home, it's not, it's not, I understand.
By definition, these children have special needs. We have to talk to them.
Why is that?
And we do try everything we possibly can to, to, you know, save money and get them there efficiently. But the safety, you know, obviously is, is first. So we do try everything out. Rick and I work very closely together to try every other alternative before we have to look elsewhere.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
My name D. I move that the board of directors approves the request of Abby Mahoney, doctoral student candidate at Lehigh University to work with our head schools and she conducts researches prior to her dissertation.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we, do we know what, what area of research is that?
I don't think we do.
That's normal. Normally, it would be provided by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. It is reviewed by them before we would even read them.
Maybe go find out this place.
I have no problem approving this because she wouldn't have gotten this far if it hadn't been approved by the Lehigh University. And usually it's voluntary, so I don't feel that our principles mean a risk.
No, I'm fine with it. I just don't think, you know, it's difficult to get like one of these things.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Mrs. Spencer. Curriculum programs and curriculum committee, Mr. Quinsham.
Two things, sir. Of course, our meeting is Tuesday. Two things, sir. Of course, our meeting is Tuesday the first of August, eighteen thirty. At that time, we will be covering the revisions to the comprehensive plan that you may all receive the copy of in the mail or in the, on by email. I am told that the, I had to read through it a couple of years ago. It's not an enviable task, but I've been advised that the two important areas that have been changed were the objectives and the, uh, what would you call them, which would achieve the plan, the action plan itself. So, uh, you'd need not, unless you're particularly interested, read through the, uh, ironclad jumping beginnings. So we'd appreciate any participation that is available. Additionally, I would like to remind all that Senator Schwenk's, uh, Titch program presentation is tomorrow at noon. Our, uh, august president will also be addressing the gathered reports. And, uh, I again, uh, endorse anyone who would like to attend that.
Any reports? Thank you, Mr. Quinsham. Now, as a committee, Mrs. Page.
Um, since the school year is left out, um, they have been previously working to prepare for the upcoming school year. Phone systems for the ad building in Wyandotte have been completed. The remaining building equipment is here and in the process of being installed. Four hundred twenty-eight phones will be updated by the end of the project. New cabling to support the phones and wireless is progressing according to schedule at Lorraine, Jacksonville, and at Virginia High is complete. The remain, remaining cabling at the junior and senior high buildings will be completed in early August. A hundred eighty-six new wireless access points will provide a higher speed, more robust wireless signal to many classrooms, and the access points will arrive later, the access points will arrive later this year. It will be installed as soon as they arrive. Forty-two classroom interactive whiteboard replacements will occur, uh, will, will occur in early August as well. This work is entirely being contracted out. Student information work has been very heavy with end of the year reporting, scheduling, and rollover. New immunization status letters have been sent, uh, which had taken them a lot of time. New student and returning student registration process is going well. Fans will be able to revise demographic, uh, the data, see schedules, and transportation, uh, starting on August fourth. That is my report from the technology.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. First County IU Board, Mr. Quinsham.
Uh, no report from the IU. I would add, like to add on the curriculum. We will also be discussing the philosophical change, change proposal, the right and, uh, immediate school. If there is time allows, but since we know that it's not going to go into effect for another year, we may put that off until the next meeting with the comprehensive plan for so much time.
Great, thank you. Um, athletic committee, Mr. Quinsham.
Couple of updates. Um, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. LaGasse sitting in the back of your room for his efforts with our sports program. Exeter was ranked twelfth of the top fifty, uh, high schools in Pennsylvania for athletics. It has to do, um, not only with actual qualitative feedback, um, from participants in the programs, but also quantitative analysis of the programs that include the number of, um, students that actually participate in athletic, um, activities. Tom, you want to add anything else to that?
Just, uh, it was very nice to see and nice to be recognized, one of the, being one of the top schools, not only in Berks County, but District Three where we compete against, and, and then also the state, because that went around pretty quickly to a lot of schools, um, in our area, and it was nice to, to be ahead of them.
And, and, and I, I want to remind folks that it's not just an issue of wins and losses here. Um, I think there's a lot of things that we do in our athletic program that, that build character and build people. And I know that Tom has been instrumental in working with the captains of the various sports teams to address some of those, um, leadership issues. Can you talk a little about that, Tom? That program that you instituted?
Yeah, so about three years ago, I went to Mr. Kane and, and we worked out something where it wouldn't take away from academic time. So we, uh, we set up every other Friday when the kids were getting out at one o'clock, and we would meet for about half an hour, thirty-five minutes. I didn't want to, to waste too much of their time or, or not have them fully engaged. So we talked about a, a, a varying number of issues, but everything some, pretty much comes back to social media, because that's basically what these kids now, in, in this time, in age, they are accustomed to. They always have their phones on, they're always looking at different things, and, um, we have a lot of great things, things pop up that I see, I save them, uh, you know, take other school districts of examples of what not to do, such as hazing, um, and other things that I see on social media, you know, one of the things, one of the national college football coaches, Urban Meyer, put out about, uh, what he recruits in multi-sport athletes. So I save that, and I talk to the kids about if you want to be recruited for college, it's not focusing on one sport, it's playing multiple sports. Here's a, a national coach of how he recruits. So there's a varying number of topics, and then we also, whatever might happen in our school and some issue we might have, whatever it might be, uh, we also talk about that as well.
Thank you. I, I might also want to report out that our athletics also do quite well academically. Probably could do a report out on that at some point, because I think we're proud of, of both. I think we really honor the student athlete part of our athletic program, so congratulations.
Thank you.
But to that end, uh, the next athletic committee meeting is Thursday, August third, at seven P M. It'll be in the, uh, high school administration building, and we have a fairly robust agenda, so all board is obviously expected to attend that meeting. Then we'll do a report out at our August meeting that we discuss. I'd also like to acknowledge, uh, Rob Perzouy and, uh, Tom again, um, for their efforts on two activities which the board approved several months ago, um, both, uh, having to do with projects that we're trying to complete in the near future to be prepared for upcoming seasons. The first is Team Room A, which I think was a fairly extensive, um, redo of a locker room that, you know, was pretty, pretty well beat up. Maybe, Rob, you want to just give a quick, I know you wrote a report for us today, but since you're here and, and you're the head of facilities, maybe you can just give us an update as to where we are on that?
Sure. We, uh, right when, basically when school let out, we started, uh, the demolition process for that, removing all the, uh, existing lockers, getting rid of them. Uh, we did scrap that material for about three or four hundred dollars too, so we made a little bit of money in the process. Uh, replaced the ceiling tiles, reinforced the vents so they wouldn't sag if it got humid in there. We did have to do some demolition, remove some, uh, non-load bearing walls and things of that nature to accommodate all the lockers going in there. Uh, and the football boosters, I believe, went in and gave it a fresh coat of paint, and, uh, now we're just basically, we've got some other loose ends to tie up, uh, a water fountain to relocate, but that won't affect the locker installation, which should commence starting the twenty-fourth is when the, they're expected to arrive for certain.
Thank you very much. And, and if you'll recall, we, we had some concerns about health and safety issues, you know, within that facility, and I think this will remedy that. So thanks for your efforts on that. The other, uh, also significant project has to do with, well, we expressed concerns about our Title IX compliance, and, um, maybe you can give us an update on where we were with the, on softball facilities?
Sure. Well, uh, in the springtime, right before the season started, we did install a home run fence, a permanent fence, uh, there at the Marcy softball field. Right now, we have, uh, work currently taking place with installing a warning track for that fence, as well as two bullpen areas beyond the fence in the left and right field, uh, outfield. Um, we have signed a, a purchase order for the installation scoreboard. Uh, I just recently got the electrical requirements for that, so I don't have a date where that's going to start, but it's definitely going to happen sooner rather than later. And then, uh, we are, uh, obtaining quotes for services for drawings and specifications for actual dugouts, so.
So that's the update. Thank you very much for the work that you're doing on it. I appreciate it on behalf of all of our parents and our student athletes. Thank you.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Quinsham. Uh, legislative base on township base on, Mr. Quinsham?
Nothing, sir.
Uh, Brooks, Breer Tech Center, Mr. Deesing.
It's this, uh, things are, not even through then, the kids, the kids aren't there, but, but, uh, I, I do, I, I don't see any other place in the agenda for me to do this, so I'm going to do it now. Um, I would like to read a statement, the purpose of the statement is, because I want this to be part of this record. Um, this is a memo that I'm sending and submitting to Dr. Phillips, Mrs. Guidish, and it's addressed to all the members of the board, to all. I am writing this memo to address a number of concerns that grew out of comments made by the board president, Dr. David Hemberger, and board superintendent workshop that took place on Saturday, July fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The purpose of my writing is to ensure that these comments become part of this board's official record. At this meeting, Dr. Hemberger asserted that if the numerical score of any board member's district superintendent's evaluation is too high or too low, he would consider discarding that evaluation. The opportunity to evaluate the superintendent is part of the responsibility of serving on this board. I have spent a few hours this weekend looking over our board policy and had a long conversation this morning with an attorney. There is no provision or legal precedent in Pennsylvania that would grant that type of arbitrary power to a board president. We're all equal members of this board. Each of our opinions carries the same amount of weight and demands an equal amount of attention. I believe that it is in the best interest of our community and this school district that these comments be made public and become part of the permanent record of this board. Thank you.
Um, facilities committee, Mr. Brady's not here. Is there anyone else who would represent the facilities committee, uh, for a report?
Not representing him, sir, but with a question, I understand there's discussions about a, uh, significant expenditure on a, uh, sign out in front of the, uh, high school. I know Mr. Brady talked with, uh, someone about it earlier. Is that going to the facilities committee for a full discussion?
Not sure whether, and unfortunately, all the players are not here relative to that, and we don't know whether or not that's going, how that's going to proceed.
No, I don't, no, I don't know what the next step, you know, I, uh, it's been mentioned to me, um, quotes out there, or the amount that I've seen have indicated that it's something that would have to be bid at that level, and I haven't really done any yet.
And then we have some quotes, we have some proposals or two, we looked at a plan, um, we have a funding source that falls outside of the, the money that we're using for the project. So I think we're fully comfortable with it, but I don't think it's at a point now where we're really, we're prepared to take an action.
Hey, question, when we talk about funding sources outside, every penny we spend is taxpayer money. Uh, you know, from what I've heard, this is, uh, what I heard about the source of funding is, is, uh, risky at best. A question, I would like to know if we have considered the township lighting ordinance, or if we're going to get into a legal discussion there. I would like to know the wisdom of the place.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I stepped down. What are we talking about?
We're talking about a, uh, sign out in front of the high school. I question.
That's a residential area, so that wouldn't even be zoned for, uh, having done this before.
There's, there's an extensive lighting ordinance that has to be complied with, and I question the need for the sign at all. Uh, I can see a renovation of the existing sign, but when we talk about the same amount of money as we would expect to receive from, uh, five to seven homes, I consider that an expenditure that's worth looking at on the committee and at the board level.
No, I think there's more discussion that has to go into that, I agree. So, um, let's, let's make sure that when we, we communicate that to Mr. Brady, and that in any facilities committee meetings that's coming up before we make it, as important as board is, is presented with any decision they have to make.
And I have a request that it be considered by the facilities committee for investigation of the organ of the township ordinances, uh, zoning and everything else, and for discussion and decisions by this board for the wisdom and design of the sign.
Thank you. All good points. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinsham. I appreciate that.
Uh, audit committee, Mrs. Page.
Um, the annual audit committee, um, will begin on September fifth of this year, and, um, Mary comes in and, you know, they check all, you know, all, I guess, slide check different things, and Mary knows better than I. And then, what, that takes about two weeks maybe, and, and then after that, you know, Mary prepares, Mary marks, you know, to the board, uh, for, uh, for the board, and then we have a meeting, uh, to discuss your, uh, and it's a public game. But that will, uh, that will, uh, after, um, that's done.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Uh, any requests, Mrs. Page?
Uh, we have page requests, uh, from a total from the general fund of eight hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents, and from the capital account, five thousand one hundred twelve dollars. I move that we pay our.
Sir. Do a motion and a second. Any discussion? Want to favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, there's no superintendent's report. Uh, I do have some comments I'd like to make that, uh, are, um, in reaction to comments that, uh, were made by Mr. Deesing. So, before you go, maybe you can ask a quick question.
Sure. This jogged my memory. Rob, any of the capital projects that we were doing this summer, is there an update on them? Is there anything major, are they all moving forward? We're going to have everything in place when the school's open? I mean, I can't recall if we approved, you know, exactly what we.
I don't think we've approved any capital projects yet. I know we're, uh, we're working on getting some roofing work put together, but that's not, uh, necessarily going to impact the start of school, that project. And I know I've been doing some legwork on LED retrofit lighting and stuff like that, but that's taking some time to put that together, getting some different vendors or contractors involved in the process, so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, let me, let me, so, so this is my, my statement to the board. Um, Mr. Deesing has made some allegations regarding my comments at a July fifteenth board workshop session that requires some clarification. My statements concerning the board's rating on superintendent, um, were intended to temper those board members who might be inclined to thoughtlessly assign ratings of five, which are consistently exceeding expectations for high score, or a score of one, which is unsatisfactory for those scores, on all thirty-five of the questions, uh, on superintendent's assessment. I also stated that any such scoring process that deviated markedly from the board norm should be accompanied by comments attempting to avoid the, the, those ratings. It's my hope, or I was hopeful, that we might be able to, we're receiving these types of assessments again, assessments that are clearly out of sync with common evaluation practices and fail to provide differentiated scoring that allows for the identification of strengths and weaknesses. I agree with Mr. Deesing's assertion that the board president has no authority to, uh, unilaterally alter the evaluation process by eliminating outlier evaluations. I would expect that any consideration in the elimination of an outlier evaluation would be done only with the majority approval of the school, and that's the kind of my statement.
I, I didn't get that right. Certain sentence, what, what did you say around that?
I said, I would expect that any consideration in the elimination of an outlier evaluation would be done only with the majority approval of the school.
And I don't think that that, I don't think you can make that assessment. I don't think you can say that I, as a school board member.
I don't think you can say that I, as a school board member, doesn't have the right to evaluate what I see the superintendent as, and if I have backup, uh, and I, I back up my statements of, of, with, with statements of why I think this could deserve this society, I don't think the, the majority of the board can overrule my evaluation. I think that's...
I think we gave Mr. Deesinger the opportunity to make his statement and we have not given the president the opportunity. I don't think it's a matter for argument. Now it's a matter to be settled if the issue should ever arise.
What do you mean it's a matter to be settled? Settled with the by, by the majority of the board?
By the board and the solicitor who is here at the time.
It's such a fine, we have a solicitor, why don't we have, uh, the superintendents?
Mrs. Page, I don't care to argue your foolish arguments now. I'm just saying this is not anything that is bearing on right now. We've had two statements. Why do we have to carry this issue out?
We have two statements. Is there any additional comment?
You know, I, 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 I...
Yeah, I, I have an additional comment.
I think you're, 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 my opinion is just as important as yours.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Mrs. Page, Russ, Russ Deesinger has a... Yeah.
My concern is about process and what you just said is just, is just another way of, of, of deviating the process. The fact is, these are, these are individual evaluations based on board per, individual board members' perceptions and their ratings. I don't believe a majority of the board, I don't believe you as the president have the right to invalidate someone's opinions or someone's comments or someone's ratings. That's the idea of individual and then they're all put together and hopefully they even want another one.
I, I would dis, I would respectfully disagree.
That's, that's...
And I think that's probably the heart of our, our argument here. In my sense is that when someone consciously makes an effort to manipulate or, uh, circumvent a system that's designed to try to reach a consensus regarding a fair and accurate assessment of superintendent, I think that's unfair and disrespectful to the board. And I think the rest of the board should have an opportunity to find a way to navigate through that system. That was my recommendation. Um, I'm hoping board members are thoughtful in their approach to an assessment, that they use a range of, of, of assessments to, 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 to help differentiate the student, the superintendent's performance. So the superintendent gets feedback in terms of strengths and weaknesses on an assessment. Anyone who gives all fives and all ones leaves no room. And a thirty-five item, uh, assessment gives you no room for the opportunity for a superintendent to understand where his, uh, his or her strengths and weaknesses are. That's, so that's where we, that's where we...
Thank you. Practice of the, uh, board in the past has been that the board president would tabulate all the evaluations of all board members, present that to the board, and also present another interpretation if there are outliers to show what, eliminating the highest and lowest would, would show in terms of the presentation of the data. So I would, I would assume that practice would continue where all board members are included in the evaluation and just like in, in sports or diving, I think the outliers are, can be thrown out as a, an additional presentation that supplements what is already done. And every, everyone sees both, both presentations. There's nothing hidden.
Well, you know, I never remember when our former superintendent, uh, was evaluated. I never remember people, uh, being concerned about those that gave her a heart. I don't remember that. Does anyone else remember that?
I don't, I don't...
I don't remember anyone giving her all hearts.
Well, I remember them almost all hearts.
Almost is only good in quakes.
No, not necessarily.
You can't be almost pregnant, you can't be almost...
I'm not talking about being pregnant or anything.
Any further discussion? Page, this needs a turn. Thank you.